First item I need to address tonight is a public hearing. The public, first public hearing is concerning 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway Site Plan SP-66. If anyone here would like to speak on behalf or against that, would you please come to the podium and state your name at this time? Mayor, you can now, or you can wait till we address it later on, since it's an agenda item except for you. Hearing, no comments?
Hold on. Sorry.
You've got to be quicker for me.
I used to jack me.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. For the record, I'd like to ask that a copy of the public hearing for night's, for tonight's meeting be made a part of the record, a copy of the ordinances for the City of Warrenton by reference be made a part of the record, and also a copy of Jack's packet for tonight be made part of the record. This is in regards to property located at 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway. She's wanting to put in a proposed professional office, and it is a permitted use. That's all I have.
Consider it done. At this time, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and I'll open Public Hearing up number two, amendments to Section 405.400 fees. Does anybody here want to address or talk about that? No, they're making it easy tonight. At this time, I'll close that public hearing.
If I can, Mayor.
Sure, sure, Mayor.
If you want to close that, well, just because I want to make sure that we meet the session for our purposes. It's a full day.
As a preliminary matter, I would ask that the copy of the public hearing notice for tonight's public hearing be made a part of the record, a copy of the ordinances by reference be made a part of the record, a copy of the public hearing notice from the planning and zoning meeting, and also the unapproved minutes and Jack's planning and zoning report. Essentially what this is, is a revision to the code now that we have Jack Hamp as our planning and zoning officer. We're requesting and planning and zoning unanimously approved, the request by the city to start doing these review fees in-house. This will reduce the cost of sending it out to George Butler and Associates for a professional engineering review, but it will also allow, and I think there should be a chart in your packet that shows you the, you know, large reduction in costs, which has been our cost for quite a while, because Jack is capable and does have the, you know, expertise to review these plans in-house. But we also do have a reservation caveat section for larger scale developments that allows us to send those out, our more complex plans, that Jack feels he needs to have an outside engineer look at. Once again, for those review fees and also for the publications, those will be deposits. Anything above the cost of the city will be refunded to the applicant, so.
Thank you, Councilor Gervail. That, I think having Jack on board is going to save the city a lot of money for expenses and fees. If there's no other comments, then I'll close that public hearing.
I did have a question, more than anything, and I guess Jack's not here tonight. Ms. Thorne, if, my only question on that is if, I understand that's going to reduce the fees that customers are going to pay, but if, if there aren't any additional costs incurred, I understand there's publication costs that come up, but I guess if we're doing it in-house, why are we charging any fees if that's covered by Mr. Hamp's salary?
Well, I think the thought process being that it's going to take more time for the staff, and while right now, there's a situation where we have Jack and there's not that much going on in planning and zoning, we will hopefully get to a point where we may need to add staff if we can want to continue to do that in-house. So again, our goal was to try to offer a product to the customer that reduces their cost, yet provides that ability to get the review completed.
And I absolutely agree, that reduces the cost. I'm trying to figure out in my mind how we justify charging anything additional. If it's, if it's not additional hours worked, it's not additional cost to us, why we're charging the fee, so.
I just think our goal was to try to reduce that to something that seemed more reasonable for the customer. I don't know that there was any consideration, at least in the discussions I was involved in, of making it a zero cost fee, but more what's a reasonable fee to the public.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'd like to open up the board, or open the Board of Alderman Meeting for the City of Warrenton for July 17, 2012. I would ask everybody to stand with the exception of Mr. Piper, and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us. Mr. Cornell will lead us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business on the agenda tonight is a presentation of the city map, and I would like to introduce Larry Piper, citizens here of Warrenton, lives over on Banner Street. And Mr. Piper has taken upon himself to hand draw a replica of the city map with all the streets and stop signs and avenues, and at this time, I would like Mr. Piper to come forward. And Melody, you can assist us, and however you want to do it. I'll come down there.
I should have run a can, I couldn't have walked over there.
Address the, there you go. I don't know, you can, you want me to hold something?
Yeah, I can hold it.
Okay.
Are we going to hold it together?
Together. I'll hold this side.
I'll lean a little bit more towards your side, so it's heavier.
Would you like to make any comments about it?
Yeah, I think I would. I've been here since January. I had a lot of accidents, and I had to be in a jolly boy nursing home. They were trying to help my legs, and it is, and I, I got out in January, and I've been living here ever since. But at 71 years old, sitting around watching TV every day ain't no good, and that's what I was doing. I was bored, so I thought about this, and I did it for the hell of it. I didn't end up, I didn't think it was going to end up like this, I just did it for the hell of it. But I'm glad to give it to the city, because that's where it belongs. So every time you look at that, you can say, yeah, it's here because an old screwball was bored.
Larry, thank you. You're welcome. We're here to city hall to hang in and display it.
I'm going to have my people coming up there and make sure.
Thank you.
Melanie.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Really nice. More patience than me. Don't believe it.
Larry, you're welcome to stay all evening.
Okay.
Make yourself at home.
I want to say something else that's not about that, but I can do it anytime you want me to.
Is it pertaining to city business or city issues?
Yeah, party hearing.
Okay, is it pertaining to city issues?
I don't, I think it would.
Well, I tell you what, we're, during the, our meeting, we have an opportunity for the public to speak, and we allow five minutes for that. Why don't you speak, or never?
I can easily do it, but I don't have to ask.
Okay, okay, we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Next item on there is approval of minutes, unless there's some discussion or concerns over the minutes from June 28, 2012, mules discussion. If there's no, no concerns, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for June 28, 2012, mules discussion.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the special meeting minutes from June 28, 2012. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carried five to zero. For the minutes, I might include that Alderman Clark is absent tonight and will not, not be here, nor will we have a vote for him. Item 4B, regular Board of Alderman meeting on July 3, 2012. If there's any corrections or additions, we'll discuss them at this time, otherwise I'll entertain a motion. So.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Towel, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the Alderman meeting from July 3, 2012. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carried five to zero. Okay, this, this time is our hearing from the public portion of the meeting, and we allow anybody from the audience to address the board. We allow a five-minute time period. We ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name, and Melody starts the clock, and you can talk away. So at this time, if anybody would like to come forward, please, please do so.
Mr. Mayor and Board Members, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Brannon. I live at 7A Sunrise Drive in Warrenton here. I have a couple questions I'd like to ask. I understand that we are having problems with our water wells now. I'm wondering, in 2007 or 2008, we spent over $700,000 for seven acres of land out here that right now is doing nothing but growing weeds. Why isn't that land sold and that money used to improve our water system? Can anyone answer that?
We can probably give you answers, but I don't think you want the board or myself using your five minutes up with the debate.
Okay. Is this feasible, Mr. Mayor, for that property to be sold and that money to be used in a useful manner?
I think it's feasible.
Okay. Second thing is, for the chief, how many policemen do you have?
Twenty-two total.
Twenty-two total.
Mm-hmm.
Is this including detectives?
Yes.
Okay. My question is this, why is there nine cars parked out here on this lot? Why aren't those cars sold? I don't care if they're sold for junk, and that money go into the fund? They're rusting down sitting out here, and don't tell me that they're used, because every time I come by here, there's a bunch of them parked back there, and today, there's nine of them. Now, if they're not being used, why aren't they sold?
Well, they actually are being used, Mr. Brannon. There's, at any time, well, let me go back. There's eight vehicles that are assigned to patrol. At any time, three or four of those are on the road, and the rest of them are parked. There's also two SRO vehicles that are fully marked vehicles, which get used during the summer by the SROs, because they're assigned to cruise, but usually during the winter, during the, when school is in session, those would be sitting at a school during the day.
Okay. I seem to find it kind of hard to understand, because I have lived on Sunrise Drive for 17 years now, and I can count on one hand the number of policemen I saw drive up that street. Now, I've seen them drive up and down 47 Highway multiple times. I've seen them parked at the Quick Trip multiple times. I know for a fact, because I was told, and it's a reliable source, that the police were called five times for disturbance over here on the north side of town. Three times, they didn't show up. Two times, they showed up and the treats were blocked. They didn't do anything about the noise and stuff, they just made people move their vehicles. So I think, chief, and I'm not, you know, I think our police, we have to have police, but I think they could be a little bit more organized or whatever, that we can see them not running up and down 47 Highway. Today, take for instance, there was two, one right behind the other going down 47 Highway, and shortly after, there was a third one. And I guarantee you, anytime there's a fender bender or anything in this town, you'll see at least two or three police cars there. I worked for St. Charles County as a deputy for a few years. We had one car south of 70 and one car north of 70, and we had a roamer in between, and we took care of a whole county. Is there any reason why we can't put one car south of 70, one car north of 70, and a roamer in between?
That's how we do it, sir.
Boy, I have a hard time believing that when you never see them.
Well, and that's something that I'll be happy to review. We have GPS in all the cars, so I can take a look at that and.
Okay, would appreciate it very much, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brannon.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
You know, and just to address your issues, if you want, want more answers and stuff, it might be a good idea to make an appointment with the chief and come in and sit down and discuss.
Oh, I have no doubt that, that the chief will, will act on things that the citizens say.
Yeah.
I think sometimes maybe he's not aware of some of this stuff, and I'm not saying he's not doing his job.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to make a comment? Mr. Piper?
You don't need it. I brought you. My voice carries.
That's, you're good.
I told you all ago, I'm 71 and I'm bored. I want a job. You don't even have to pay me a nickel, nothing. I come from Columbia, Illinois, Germantown. I was born and raised there, and everybody took care of their property. It was, it's spotless. And I lived in St. Charles for 27 years. I can't really say that would be true there. But out here, some of these people are abusing the place, I think. They don't mow the lawn, they let all the junk pile up all over the place, and I like to clean all that crap up. When I drive around the city in this thing, I go four miles an hour, and I can see a lot of things that could be done to clean up this town, to just make it nicer, you know, better looking. And I don't want to report to any of these people if you give me the job, because these guys are all electable, and I don't want, when people get us something in the mail, they're going to be pissed off, and you might ask them to retire. So I want to report to somebody who's not electable, who will get the job, that I can call up and say, Bob, Bob, another one today on 205 whatever street, it looks like crap, you know? And then you can go look, or somebody can go look, and if you agree with me, write them a letter, tell them he's got so many weeks to clean it up, and if he don't, you'll clean it up, but he gets a bill. He gets charged. I mean, I pay it, but he gets charged. And I would like to see that happen in this town, because I want, I'm going to live here for as long as I'm alive, and I want to be proud of Warrenton. I don't want my friends to come here and see, most of the people do good. It's just a few here and there, and it just burns me up. So I want them to clean up their mess, and I want somebody to tell it to, and then I want some action on that. And I don't want to be knowing, I don't want anybody to tell who I am, because then they'll beat me up.
Yeah.
So I have to, I have to be secret. So that's all I got to say. If you let me do it, I'd be happy to do it. No pay, no nothing, this, like I said earlier, I got to have something to do. I'm bored, so that's it.
Thank you, Larry. We have the same concerns you have. We'd like to clean up all the debris and the little issues in town, and we think we work at doing that, but as you can see, we're, we don't get it all done.
No, not even close.
Not even close.
I can name you ten of them right here that is crap.
Anyone else like to address the board? At this time, we extend the same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. Any board member would like to address the public?
Well, I'd just like to thank the citizens for cooperating as good as they have with the mandatory water conservation we've got going on right now. Unfortunately, I don't know, I don't think we're the only town that's having this issue, or only area.
Oh, they get to get.
It was, I guess, a drastic measure we had to take, but it's something that we had to take.
Okay.
Right now, we're in the process of trying to alleviate some of that, and hopefully, in not too near future, we'll, we'll be able to do something better, so. Anyway, just thanks for your cooperation, and I think it's been hard on everybody, plus the businesses, but I think he's leaving his stuff. That's all I need to say, is just thank everybody.
Thank you, Phil. Alderman Kendall?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Cornell?
I'll just, you got to speak to the mandatory water conservation. I haven't gotten near as many phone calls as I expected, angry with the situation. I think most people are understanding. I have had some phone calls that are more out of frustration with a lack of communication on, on our part. And I understand, you know, this is not a avenue that anybody, I believe, on this board has been down, or any of the current employees have been down, although it has happened before. I've been told back in the 80s or 90s, Mr. Alderman Flake may have been here back then. So I try and reiterate to them that they will get their answers, and we're working towards a solution. I was not real happy to see us named in a CNN article online, but I guess if you're, those are our moments of fame, they were, they were fleeting at least. That's all I have.
Alderman Flake?
Well, I've had calls too, pretty well like what John was saying here. Mainly, there were some about the pool. People were frustrated because the pool was closed, and after I explained to them the situation that we had, and we'd love to have the pool open, I mean, we're doing our best to try to get everything solved and get our water back up in order, and after explaining that to them, they sort of smoothed it over and let me go with that. But everybody is cooperating, and they understand we do have a problem.
Alderman Dryer? Nothing. I, at this time, I'm going to, I get an opportunity to give my remarks, and I want to dittle what Alderman Towel says, that I want to thank the citizens and the community for being understanding. I think all in all, they've been very supportive. They don't like it, but they, they followed the mandatory conservation water order. We like it again, too. I'm sure my, my family and grandchildren would like access to the pool and like for it to be over, but I've seen people hauling water into their pools with bulk water, 2,000, 3,000 gallon trucks bringing water in. I saw the county commissioners had a tanker, a farm truck tanker, and they were emptying tubs to water their trees and trying to save their shrubs and so forth. A lot of people have suffered. A lot of people have lost sod, lost lawns, lost trees, lost shrubbery, lost flowers, and I understand that. The car wash people are complaining because they're losing business and losing income, but it's, it's one of those things, we'd rather not be in this situation, but we are, and we're all making the best of it, so. Other, other issue to get off of that, well, I tell you what, I'm going to stay on that issue for a little bit. I want to, I want to give an update on where we're at with the well. I don't want to take guys' reports, but just a couple disappointing things that's happened. When, when we contracted with the well driller, he told us this was a two-day project from the time he started until he finished, and, and we were pretty strict with him that anything that would change or alter that, we wanted to know about it. The thing he didn't tell us about it, about it is those two days might not be consecutive days. So we ran into an issue today where the other, other well was disabled on Monday, the pump was pulled, the pipes were pulled, and we were assuming the new well would be placed back in the hole today. The problem came up that the pipe has not been delivered yet. The pipe that the pump and the motor attaches to, we don't have it. We don't know what happened or why, and we weren't notified. We were assured that that truck would be here tomorrow morning with that pipe, and we would start assembling that well. So obviously, that's put us behind time again. So a little disappointed in that. I hope, I was hoping I was going to come tonight and tell everybody the good news that our well was up and functioning, or are going to be functioning the first thing in the morning. Now, it looks like we're going to be at least another day behind in, in possibly two days. Could run into Thursday, am I right on that, Guy?
That's correct.
So I just want the public to know, we're, we work on this. Poor Guy, he's, he's calling the well driller probably four or five times a day. We've been in constant communication with him, but we're still, still coming up short, so hopefully, we're going to get this thing resolved this week. The, the other issue as far as thanking people has helped us, one of our biggest water users, and the public might not know this, is the Coca-Cola plant out here just east of town, and Guy and I have met with those people and tried to figure out a way for them to consume less water, and they've been very cooperative. They finally acknowledged that they were getting and buying a lot of water from Warrenton, and they were going to take steps in, in procedures to use less of our water. We think they instituted those steps last week. We've been having a meter read every morning this week, and we think by the end of the week, we'll be able to get some final readings, and we think they have done what they told us they were going to do, and be a fewer consumer of our, of our water, or lesser consumer, so at least that, that part's going on. Basically, that's, that's all I have to say. Just want to, want to kind of bring everybody up to date on that, so. The next thing, I'm going to move to item number eight, is the agreement with Edwin Carl, Antenna and Water Tire, for the St. Charles Radio Club Star and Spotters. If Mr. Carl would like to address this?
I have a handout. First of all, I want to thank you for, for listening to me.
Mr. Carl, while you're getting your thoughts together, I want to mention one, you can stay right there.
Yeah.
Mine's going to be real short. I just want to mention one more thing to the public, I forgot on my public comments. All the board members got a, in their packet, got a letter from the Office of the State Auditor's Office, and basically, this letter has acknowledged that the state is going to do an audit on the city. Didn't give us a timeframe as to when it's going to happen. They gave us a price range at somewhere between the 50 and $65,000. It could be two months, three months, it could be next year before it started, so I just, I forgot to do that in my remarks, and thank you for letting me interrupt.
Oh, no problem.
Mayor, can I comment on your comment?
Sure.
Just real quick, I'm sorry for interrupting. It also reads in the letter, "To please make appropriate plans to budget for this cost." Have you looked at that, Mrs. Thorne?
We actually increased what we had in contingency on this budget that we just entered the 1st of July, to allow for the possibility of that, so we're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're not going to interrupt you anymore.
That's okay.
First of all, I'd like to distribute this letter if you all would like.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I turned in a request, after I came up here and I signed the paperwork to get put on the agenda, I realized that, gee, you probably need some information. And I think in the request for fee waiver that I turned in, maybe I kind of overloaded it, and I gave you everything all at once in a, in a big shot, but I wanted to be thorough. And if you have not had copies of this, I can.
We have copies.
Give you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I also have pictures of what we're talking about. Here's the antenna above the water tower, and on the side of the water tower, and a little blue box on the back of the building is our equipment housing. So I did a little detective work amongst the club members, and as near as I can tell, this is. this equipment has been here since sometime in the nineties. And this started out very innocent, in, in that I, I thought we needed to do some antenna works, I saw Guy, and I said, "How do I get access to the water tower?" And that started a whole chain of events, and, and here we are. And while the idea of a formal agreement is probably a good one for all of us, I must say, in all of our operations, in all our locations, we don't have any paper with anybody. There is the, I will say, there is a draft of a preliminary letter with the city of Hawk Point that goes back to 2002, and it's never, it's never gotten beyond the draft stage. Now, having said all of that, some of the items that I wrote down probably really belong in the discussion with whoever in the city is empowered to do contracts, and not bring that, the details to you all, such as the requirement to get a written permission to get to a cabinet that's on an outside of a building. I, I think that's a, something that belongs in another agreement. Certainly, to get access to the water tower, since it's fenced in, we would, it'd probably be a good idea to go to somebody and get a key, and make sure that we're using the right, the good personnel, and so on. But the main, the main reason for being here is the cost of both the, the annual lease and the application fee. We are entirely self-supported by dues and one faith, and one fundraiser. Most of the equipment that was in our system was in excess of thirty years old, and we had to, we had to go about a rebuilding project, and it spent about eight thousand dollars on antennas and equipment. And so, we really don't have the resources to, to easily enter into an agreement like this, and I'm coming before you to ask for a waiver of the application fee and the annual, the annual rent. If there's a concern about the electricity, we calculated that the, the equipment in the cabinet uses thirty-five watts in the transmit position, and about fourteen watts in standby. And using, with the residential rate for Quiver River Electric, that works out to be about a dollar five a month. So, the, the cost to the city is nominal, and it certainly helps us perform our mission, and that is providing communications for the Weather Bureau. That's our primary mission. I don't, I don't wanna take up a lot of your time and, and bore you, but in the FCC rules, the very first thing it says for the, for why we exist, it says, "Recognition and enhancement of the value of the amateur service to the public as a voluntary, non-commercial communication service, particularly with respect to providing emergency communications." It is, it is my belief, and many in my end of the ham radio business, believe that if we, when we get an incident, which usually happens, the first thing that dies is the cell service, the next thing, the internet goes away, and maybe dial-up might work. But ham radio has a reputation for, for always getting through. Each and every one of our sites either has battery backup or a generator, capable of generally operating somewhere between twenty and thirty hours. With its generator, it goes as long as we, we have fuel. So, that's who we are, and that's who we're about, and as, I guess, in my original pleading, I, I demonstrated all the locations that we're at. The primary repeater locations are located in O'Fallon, and the city of St. Charles on water towers. The remote stations are in Hawk Point here, and down in Augusta, also on water towers. The only non-water tower is the Salvation Army Hotel in downtown St. Louis. And all are provided in the, in the interest of public, public service rent-free.
I, I don't think we doubt your mission or, or anything, I, I think you provide a great, great public service. I, I think the, the city's issue is, and you have to look at it from our standpoint, if you notice, you're not the only antenna up on those towers.
Mm-hmm.
And, and some of this came about by, by accident, because we got the notice in all the antennas up there, and we were looking for contracts, we didn't know who they belonged to.
Mm-hmm.
And as we're looking to see who had contracts and who didn't, it kinda raised a red flag to us. But, but we do, do lease other space to other entities, and you put us in a position of, we waive the fees for you, then, then how do we charge those other people that same fee? Or why wouldn't we waive them also?
Well, I, I, in, in, in our defense, in the, in the discussion with the powers that be in the early stages of this, it was pointed out that the school district is also on that same water tower. Well, the school, the school district has a revenue stream. We don't. And, and again, this is the only incident, the only place where we have been, been put in this position, and that includes the city of O'Fallon, Public Water Supply District Number Two, the city of Hawk Point, et cetera. I know when the, the new mayor took office in Hawk Point about three years ago, we entered into a conversation, what is this all about? And when he found out that it wasn't just a bunch of crazy hams, that there really was a, a real public service backbone, backbone need for this, he said, "Okay, we'll just, we'll just go on the way it is." I know they're gonna build a new water tower within the next two years, and we're included in the plan to move the antennas, so. You know, I, I certainly understand your position, but I'm pleading our case that we, we just don't have the resources to, to be able to continue this, if, if we have to pay it.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Carl?
I would have a question, probably more for our city attorney. The, is there any provision within the municipal code to allow us to waive the hundred and twenty-five dollar application fee?
Alderman Cornell, there is not. The, the, a little background on this, if I can, to color that question. We passed an ordinance related to any antennas on any city-owned structure years ago, related to co-location, to try to eliminate some of the, you know, uglier type of antennas, to really try to proactively deal with this. My understanding about how this really came about also came because the school district was requesting to put an additional antenna on top of one of the water towers, not just because of the request of maintenance, it kinda, it's kind of a perfect storm, no pun intended, to, you know, this, these issues coming up, and so, we tried to put an agreement together that did a very close analysis of what it would actually cost the city to have that antenna on there. And I actually was the one that wrote the legal document, if you have any questions about that. But a lease that was very basic, a lease that essentially tried to capture the public need and public service, because the FCC recognition of the ham radio operators is actually recognized in our ordinance as well, I don't know if you had a chance to review that, to try to promote that as well. There's no, there's this, we, we created for this type of application, a conditional use permit that doesn't have to go through Planning and Zoning and Board of Aldermen, it's an administrative one. But there is no provision in there that says the Board of Aldermen may waive this fee related to the application for the antenna and the lease for the co-location on top of the water tower. So, there would be some difficulties with precedential value you guys would create, because we anticipate the school district will be coming next to enter into this agreement for the electrical purposes as well. So, there is no provision, and my fear would be, if you guys said, "Well, we're gonna vote to waive it," obviously, you guys can vote to do that, is, it's not in our ordinance for a waiver of the fee. It's already a reduced permit fee for a conditional use, that doesn't require the public hearing notice and plan review or whatnot, is, what do we then do with the other entities? We probably would need to go back and change your ordinance. But we did very carefully do an analysis of the city's costs, 'cause it's a one-time application fee. The contract automatically renews, the, the lease agreement automatically renews, and it's a hundred dollars a year based on our estimation of the electrical cost.
So, the, the hundred dollars is an annual?
Annual, not a month, a year, yeah.
A year.
Based on our estimation of what the electrical cost would be.
And plus a hundred and twenty-five of...
Just for the application, for the administrative review for the city to review that.
Two and a quarter.
Could, could I advance a thought, in that this probably predates the ordinance? The installation predates the ordinance, and what we're doing is bringing this up to date.
Well, it, it wouldn't be a legal non-conforming gift, if that's what your question is. It wouldn't be grandfather quote-unquote, 'cause it is on city property. It would fall under the regulation of the ordinance, especially with the maintenance that you would wanna do, which is specific under the ordinance as well.
We, we, we do have to, in any event, we do have to discuss the written permission to go work on it, because the cabinet's external to the building. Why would I need that?
Well, the concern was, in reviewing it with staff, was to make sure, it's written permission, the idea being that we're aware that somebody's over there. We've had some property damage to the towers recently, some vandalism on the towers, and not saying that you guys would do that. So, like anything, and, and there is the terrorism, you know, regulations that have passed, been passed down, as far as the water supply being an essential system, which, you know, is one of the concerns that we had for public safety reasons, was knowing who is out there, knowing who's supposed to be out there, and not to be prohibitive, but to, essentially, because we have to protect our water system, you know, and because it is one of the number-one, you know, fears of terrorism threat is the water system is, being able to know who's gonna be out there. So, that there's not just somebody out there on the side of the water tower building, obviously not related to it, the intentions are good, but taking a step back and looking at the picture, it's the public safety picture, is, this is not to be prohibitive, but to make sure we know if somebody's gonna be out there working on it, we know who's gonna be out there working on it, we identify it, we log it, we know what was done out there, we know who's out there. And that's part of the issue we dealt with, with the vandalism, was, you know, the vandalism of the water tower, there was some terrorist-type laws that could be applicable, you know, interfering with that, and that's part of the, you know, things that we wanted to make sure that, you know, it's one of our greatest resources, we protect it. So, it was not directed to you guys specifically, but more just the general public safety and keeping track of who's out there.
I am on the, the approved entrance list at all of the other sites that I mentioned. My telephone number's been on that cabinet for at least four years, so there's no attempt at avoiding it. But on the other hand, if something happens on Saturday, and I have to get written permission, it may put me in, in cross purposes with FCC law to shut the thing down.
Wow.
So, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I think if, if you would be okay with my name and phone number, and perhaps one other, as being authorized repairmen. Again, the, the inside defense around the water tower is obviously off limits, okay? First of all, I'm too old to climb, and so is the people that I work with, and we usually hire a professional tower, tower crew to work on it, so that we're all, we're all protected.
Yeah, and I think the language was written ambiguous enough for the written permission, that it could be some type of ongoing written permission, or specific permission for specific repairs. I think if you read it, it was ambiguous in that fact, anticipating there may be certain individuals assigned to go out there, so we have an idea of when their scheduled maintenance or emergency maintenance, who these people could be. So, that, that's why it was written permission prior, but it did not state written permission on every single event of maintenance or anything like that, just written permission, written authorization.
I was gonna say, this sounds more like authorization.
Exactly.
Permission, which is no different than his authorization listed.
Right, so, I mean, we would obviously be able to work that out with Guy, I don't think that would be an issue at all.
Again, addressing the cost, okay? With a thirty-five watt power demand in transmit and a five percent duty cycle, and fourteen watts in standby, it comes up to about a hundred and five dollars a month. Now, I don't know if you're paying the same rate that I am at home, 'cause I know residential rates vary from businesses and other locations, but it certainly is miniscule, definitely not a hundred dollars.
You, you said a hundred and five dollars a month, a dollar and five?
A dollar, a dollar five, yeah, a dollar five, I'm sorry.
I thought you meant...
And taking the specifications from what we got, we had Quiver River do that calculation for us, that's what we got.
Undoubtedly, it was done on fifteen amps, which is the size of the service. Let's go, let's back up. About three or four years ago, there was an issue in the winter with the heater popping a circuit breaker, and it turns out, our outlet was tied into that same circuit. And so, the concern was that we were causing the, and we actually measured the current drawn by the, by the radio equipment, and it was, it was miniscule. And as an accommodation at that time, the electrician came out and rewired everything, giving us a dedicated circuit out to our, we only have four, four outlets inside the cabinet. So, on the fifteen amps, it may, that may be a, a justifiable number, but not in actuality of what we actually use.
I didn't talk to, that's just what I was told.
Yeah.
When we sat down, it was, it was not a revenue generating issue, it was a matter of covering the cost of the citizens for the electrical cost.
I, I can, I can tell you, even at home, I don't use that much electricity, and I have a lot of big stuff.
So, well, what I'm hearing from counselor, that, that this board doesn't have the authority to waive those fees, I, I think our best scenario is if they wanted to look at rewriting the, the issue at a later time, that would give them that authority, I mean, I don't think I'm beyond taking a look at that.
Okay.
But at, at this time, you tell us, we don't have that authority.
Should I, should I, should I deal with this gentleman?
Which one?
The council?
You can, if you like.
Okay. Would that be all right? Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your consideration, I brought, I brought what I could to the meeting, and...
We appreciate it, we, we wish we could have done more for you, and, I mean, if the Aldermen choose to do so, we can certainly get with counselor and relook at, rework that, or relook at it.
I'd appreciate it, if you, if you could, if you could do that.
Okay. I think we'll give that some, some consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carl.
Thanks for coming.
I'm on agenda item number nine, liquor license request for Little Asia, for liquor by the drink, including Sunday liquor license, located at 916 North Steinhegen Road.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the requested liquor license for Little Asia.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow, to approve the liquor license request for Little Asia, for liquor by the drink, including Sunday liquor license at, located at 916 North Steinhegen Road. Did I have the, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carried, five to zero. Melody Room, City Clerk, my next item on the agenda. Item A, Raderman 812, Veterans Memorial Parkway, Site Plan, SP 66.
This is, like I said, a piece of property that's located at 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway. Back in May, it was rezoned from R2 to C3 Highway Commercial, which is, and it's for a business, professional business office, which is a permitted use in the C3 zoning district. There's a copy of the site plan, I think in the packet that Jack had given you, that shows on the site plan, the sidewalks, and it shows like a tree push buffer that goes around the back. One of the questions that was at the planning and zoning meeting by Mrs. Raderman was the request to possibly pay into the sidewalk fund, and to not have to put up a fence or a buffer in the back. After the commission looked at everything, and they looked at the site plan, they rejected the applicant's request to vary from the site plan, and recommended the buffer and sidewalk requirements be enforced as shown on the site plan.
And that was a nine to zero vote?
Yes.
With one abstention. Is that all you have on that nominee?
I do, I think it's...
Mrs. Raderman, do you wanna address any of these issues?
Thank you for letting me come and speak to you regarding these issues.
And yes, I would prefer to pay into the sidewalk fund, that I believe the city already has established, as opposed to putting a sidewalk at that location. I don't feel that it's, at this time, a feasible location for a sidewalk. There is obviously no sidewalks would be adjoining to this property, and I think it is going to attract people that maybe are interested in skateboarding, especially towards the edges of it, and I'm concerned about that, and then possibly some trespassing that would come along with that. That's my concern with the sidewalk, I thought that putting into the sidewalk fund would just be a much better use of my funds than putting a sidewalk there. Also, the thought that possibly down the road, forty, not forty-seven, but Old Forty there may become a wider highway with growth, and then my sidewalk would just be ripped up anyway. So, that was my thought on the sidewalk.
One of my issues with the sidewalk there is that your, your, the front of your business is all gonna be parking lot?
Yes.
So, the, the interests in exit, getting back on... So the interests in exit, getting back on and off Veterans Memorial Parkway, they're going to be driving across that sidewalk almost the whole length of your lot.
Yeah, that would be true.
I'm wondering how a sidewalk will hold up, you know, with the equipment coming in and out of there.
The gentleman that did the excavation for my parking lot did indicate that that could be something that could happen as well. I'm not a construction person, so I don't know a lot about that.
Ms. Raderman, have you gotten bids or cost estimate on installation of the sidewalk?
Yes, I did, and I did not retain a copy, I gave that to Mr. Hampf, and I believe it was around $800.
And you realize that the ordinance would possibly require you, your contribution to the sidewalk fund may be greater than the cost of installing that sidewalk?
Yeah, that might be something in the neighborhood of $1,000, and I'm fine with that. It's still $1,000 better spent than $800 worse spent, in my opinion.
I've had an opportunity to drive over there, I spoke on the phone with Ms. Raderman earlier this week, and have had a couple opportunities and have a couple thoughts that, I know that this would not be the first time that a sidewalk was put in that had budded up to no other sidewalks, sidewalk to nowhere, from nowhere. But that is a concern as to the value of that sidewalk, especially at this time. I also wonder about the requirement of having her put this sidewalk in. I'm not sure if Guy is familiar enough with the area to speak off the cuff, but I don't want to run into a situation like we had on Walton Street where we planned a sidewalk for one side of the street, and then it turns out that the better area for that is on the opposite side, and that certainly would appear to be a possibility to me.
That's correct. We haven't looked at it that far in the future to say which side of the street to go on.
Okay. So it certainly seems like a reasonable request to have to pay in, and actually something that I guess may cause Ms. Raderman more money out of pocket, but she also sees the value of that, so that'd be my only comment on the sidewalk.
Well, I too had spoken with Ms. Raderman this week, and I too have went over there a couple different times to look at the sidewalk area and the buffer area in the back. And I have to agree with Alderman Cornell, at this time, I think it would be more feasible to have her put it in the fund. Putting a sidewalk there now, I think it's going to create more issues than anything, and no telling how long it's going to be before anything else is done along that side of the road, if at all. And the way of cars driving over it is a big concern, I'd hate to see you invest all that money in the sidewalks. And I think we may have some other issues, I don't know if we can discuss those at this time, Mrs. Thorne, as far as the sidewalks, what we talked about on the phone.
That really just related more to the fact that it is truly, as Alderman Cornell said, it doesn't connect to any other sidewalks.
Right.
So as far as making it appropriate for any kind of ADA requirements, you know, it really doesn't meet those at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Not to repeat what these guys have already mentioned, but I feel like the sidewalk fund would probably be our better choice at this time, because it is a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yes.
Yeah.
The only comment I would make, if you guys are inclined to make or pay into the sidewalk, would be as a condition of the site plan, because obviously ordinance for the site plan is not on tonight because it receives special requests for these conditions. I would ask that, it is an area of transition, it is the first commercial area going in there, you know, we don't want to be in the situation that we've been in the past where we then have to go back and obtain easements for the property, and I don't know if Ms. Raderman would have a problem as a condition executing an easement to the benefit of the city for the use of a sidewalk, if the city then decided at a later date to go put a sidewalk in. Because that also becomes an issue when we allow somebody to pay into sidewalk fund, and then we deal with down the road, hey, we want to put a sidewalk in here, now it makes sense, there's this type of business here, or this type of business here, because then we don't have that easement acquired, and that becomes an issue later.
Do you understand what he's saying, that...
The easement for the, later on down the road?
Yeah, in case we would want to put a sidewalk in at some point in time.
Yeah, oh, that'd be acceptable to me.
I'd be in agreement to that.
Then you, well, we've talked about the sidewalk portion, you also had some concerns about the buffer?
Yes, I have long-term residents that live around that area, one 20 years, one 40-plus years, and one since 1950, and they are not interested in any buffer or fence being put along the backyard of that property. They like the way it is now, they like the openness of the area. They have all signed a document, which I know the planning and zoning people all got a copy of, but I don't know, it's just a little...
We got it.
Okay, okay. Just stating that, that they are the three property owners whose land is touching this property, and that is their feelings on it, I guess for any other way of saying it. And I do know that one, and this buffer has to go towards, I mean, it has to go right on the property line, from what I'm understanding, and that property line, in one instance, is very close to another resident's house, and it would be a very different look to his landscape than what it is now. I know it's different. The other thing is, if I would go with a natural fence as opposed to the, you know, vinyl wood type fence, it'd be hard to plant anything right now, and I'm looking at moving in August, I don't know how I would keep it alive, or even get it in the ground without a jackhammer at this point. So that's a little bit, that's where that is too, it's basically my neighbors would like to have that, and of course, I don't want to spend an obnoxious amount of money on a fence that nobody wants to look at.
Well, I don't think we're saying you have to put a fence, I mean, you can plant some cedars or pines or something like that. You know, this is the first request I can ever remember that the neighbors initiated a request that they don't want anything there. Always before, it's the neighbors are the ones requesting, we don't want headlights shot in our backyard, or we don't want a streetlight or whatever, and we never had that happen before. Not to cut you off, but I think the issue with us and the city is, it's probably not an issue with you, but it may be an issue with the next person that occupies that business. I mean, you might decide to sell it and move down the road or what have you, and maybe they tear that structure down and build up some sort of a business there, and it could become an issue for the city, you know, at that time. So I think that's why planning and zoning was hesitant to make any changes or variances on that.
I did understand that if that would happen, say I would move my business again or close my business, what have you, and another business would come in, they would have to start over with a site plan that would be new. So if, I know it's not feasible, you know, a daycare or something like that would come in that would maybe have a greater noise level or something, they would have to go through the process as well.
My... I think that's true.
There's, we talked about this, Ms. Raderman, there would, if the structure remained the same, because there's two types of site plans, there's the administrative site plan review, which would be a change of occupancy, it would just be an administrative site plan review, which would not reflect the change to the buffer zone. If it was a new structure that went in, that would require a full site plan reviews process, and that buffer zone would then be reviewed again. So the issue being, if it was the business, the structure remained the same, and Mary, you touched on this, structure remained the same, it would not be reviewed for those issues. There would be some landscaping review, but not buffer zone reviews. The site plan buffer zones would be reviewed only in the full site plan review process, so that would be the concern.
Yes, and we did, and we talked about what types of business would be feasible in that structure, which is very limited to where a new structure most likely would have to be built if a different, or many types of businesses would go in there.
My concern with a variance on the buffer is that, as opposed to the sidewalk issue, there is an alternative, which is paying into the sidewalk fund. There doesn't appear to me to be an alternative to the buffer, other than to just ignore our codes and ordinances. That being said, I think that it definitely needs to be addressed, the fact that nobody should be forced to waste money trying to plant anything at this time of year, especially at a time when we're restricting the water to try and keep your investment alive.
Be optimistic, we have water, so be supportive. Mrs. Raderman, do you have anything else you like that?
I believe that's it.
Any other concerns from, comments from the Aldermen?
What exactly is the height that, if they had shrubs there, how high?
Six feet, it would, the idea being it would grow into a six-foot height.
It has to be, something to be...
Was that within two years?
I know the one side of the property, I guess the neighbors already got shrubs along the one side.
He has some shrubs over there.
That's within two years, correct?
Well, I mean, you guys could make it in your motion, obviously with the weather conditions that it would be, have the opportunity to grow in, because with the heat being what it is, I don't know how you're going to grow any type of grass or tree and any type of, it's going to go dormant. So, I mean, obviously, based on, you know, the drought conditions, it probably would make sense to include that if, you know, any type of green space would have two years of growing due to the weather conditions, because you're probably going to need that.
Or even delay it until, you know, such time, it'd be more feasible to plant something. I agree with you.
And I think Jack, you've worked with Jack, I think Jack would not have a problem working with them on that.
That possibly I could delay planting to a time that...
Sure. Planting right now would not be ideal, it would be flushing it down the toilet.
Some type of timeframe needs to be made into a motion, or...
Well, I think you could, I would recommend you, because we'll put this in ordinance format to work on the language for the next meeting, you know, based on whatever your outcome is on your vote, but, you know, delegating to Jack to work with a timeframe, and then we can bring that back, and we can have Jack talk to Mary to say, what do we need, two years, that probably is going to be reasonable, because it's going to need time to plant, time to establish, and it's going to need time to grow, so.
So we need a motion to approve the site plan at 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway, and with any amendments you want to attach to that?
So in other words, we would say, instead of the sidewalk in lieu of the sidewalk, put it towards the sidewalk fund.
Yeah.
That'd be part of the motion.
And I'd also ask you guys put something in there in your motion about the time for, the additional time for the greenscape...
Right.
...buffer.
As well as the easement revision.
And the easement as well, yes.
And when you talk about a timeframe, just a timeframe to be determined, or...
The timeframe to be worked out between the planning, zoning coordinator and the applicant.
I would make a motion to approve the site plan for 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway, Site Plan SP 66, with the revisions being the allowance of payment into the sidewalk fund in lieu of installation of sidewalks, the granting of an easement by the owner, Ms. Raderman, to the city, and an agreement to be worked out on the installation of the natural buffer and berm to be determined at a later date.
I'll second that.
Melody, are you writing this motion down?
As quickly as I could.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Tallo, you'll read that back to us.
To approve the site plan at 812 Veterans Memorial Parkway, with revision of allowing to pay, the applicant to pay into the sidewalk fund in lieu of the sidewalks, granting an easement to the city for future sidewalks, and an agreement worked out with the planning and zoning director to work out a timeframe to put in the buffer.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Raderman.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm on item 10C, no, 10B, Amendment to Section 405, Point 400, fee.
This is something Chris had talked about in the public hearing in regards to allowing plans, in-house plan reviews, instead of sending them out unless, for some reason, the city would still have the option to send them out to an engineer if they would so choose to do so. He had put an existing in-house plan review fee proposal, which showed how much the customer would be saving, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, 10 to zero.
Any comments or concerns from the Aldermen?
Briefly, renew my concern of the, that we're charging a fee to cover the cost of work being done by an employee who is already being paid salary. I would like to see the fees be, at least at this time, nothing more than actual costs incurred by the city, but...
Give that some thought, I'm not sure about that. If we hired outside engineering firm to do those things, I mean, these fees are probably going to be...
Absolutely.
They're going to be higher.
I agree, I agree. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the process of, I like the fact that we're going to be doing these in-house, and the cost of doing those in-house are paying Mr. Hampf's salary, which are already paid for by taxpayers. So I don't understand, if we are not incurring an additional cost over and above his salary, I don't necessarily agree with the necessity of a fee to cover these duties. I think the cost of doing that business is Mr. Hampf's salary.
You have any comment on that, Terry?
Really, the only comment, Mayor, that I would have is just, that's not something that I think we really considered when we started looking at this, but yet trying to have a savings. It has not been uncommon in the city's history to have a fee for some type of in-house review. There's been in-house stormwater review fees for, in our code, for a very long time, and other fees associated with things such as licensing and permits. So I don't think it's unusual to have a fee, but certainly it's something that if that's what the board wants to look at, that we could take a look at. I think the danger in that is what happens when you get to a point where you have enough of these reviews, that there's not the time to do it, and then do you go back to sending that out, or, you know, what do you do at that point? But that's something we could deal with at the point that that happened, if that's what you all choose to do. Our goal was to be able to reduce what was currently being charged to the customer.
I guess my goal would be, let's reduce it as far as we can reduce it. That's, I understand that the future may require additional staff, and then our position may change. I don't know how quickly those, that workload is going to grow over the next couple of years, but if we can save the customer the money over the next couple of years, I think that it's a project worth looking at.
And what do you do with the situation that Jack can't handle, and we have to send it out?
It's already in there. It's currently in the proposed fees that they would be charged for...
The same price.
Absolutely.
Is that, if I'm not correct, or are we correct on that?
If the decision is to send it outside, then those engineering fees would be required.
By all of them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, that's pretty good, okay. I was worried about maybe creating another issue there.
No, I don't think that the city should bear any cost, any additional cost of this, I just also don't think that it should be a revenue stream.
Alderman Tallo, do you have any comment on that? Thoughts on that?
To be honest with you, I gotta, I gotta agree with Alderman Cornell, he makes a good point.
Twice tonight.
I know, I must be losing my mind.
Start a scare.
That does make a good point. Something to consider.
He makes a good point, yes, but I'm thinking long-term, what if we have to step outside the office here and have to, I think we should continue with business as usual, and I appreciate the effort of Terry and her staff for taking... taking the time and reducing the, the fees.
Alderman Dryer, got what you're feeling.
I'm not really sure right now.
Alderman Flake?
Well, I'm just thinking that what we're doing right now, I consider is fair, and if the economy gets better, you know, and they get swamped with work, then we're going to have to sub, you know, send some of it out out of house to get done, and then at that time, from what I'm hearing, we can charge an out-of-house fee, you know, if we have to send it to another engineer. So, I'm, I'm all right with that.
We'll entertain a motion.
I got one question.
Okay.
What are you going to do, who's going to pick who's going to get not have to pay their fee if we have to send something out, and then the person that has to pay a fee is going to, if somebody's got to pay, some of these are like $800 or something, somebody has to pay $800 for their fee to get sent out, and somebody else, you know, if we got enough time, they can do one for nothing. Who's going to pick who gets to pay what?
I don't know if it's so much a time element. I think it's an expertise element, I think is what we're talking about. Is that correct? When we talked about Jack would not be so qualified, I guess, to do the bigger project?
If he had time, if he, if he didn't have enough time to do enough, do all of them.
And that was just my assumption that it was, it would be sent out if it was beyond Jack's expertise or, or abilities. Is that?
That was our understanding, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was...
So, what I'm hearing Alderman Dryer say, if we eliminate these fees and then, then we get really busy and Jack has to send stuff outside to an engineer, we, we have to charge those people then?
Yes.
Is that, is that what you're saying, Alderman Dryer?
Yeah.
Am I following that right?
I don't think we would have another choice.
So, so then, then I understand what he's saying, then we pick and choose.
You got to push and shove.
Yeah. Alderman Cornell, all of a sudden, he's having to pay $500 and Alderman Flake, he got it for nothing.
I absolutely believe that at the time, that it becomes an issue of needing to send those out because of the workload, then I absolutely think that we have to revisit it, whether that's additional staff, whether that is, is revisiting the fees.
I think then you're going to, you're going to create a beast. You're going to say, well, last year we didn't have to pay. Why do we have to pay? I think you're creating a monster.
Aren't we creating that monster here by people that paid $800 for it last year, now, man, now they only have to pay 400? I mean, you can, you can always come back to this and change it. My thing is, over the next couple of years, when we're trying to lure business and help business with their costs, anything we can do, if we have to come back in two years and revisit it and, and reinstitute fees, we've saved money over the last two years, and, and things change over time, so.
Mrs. Thorne, do you have any clue what, what the, the cost to the city would be if we eliminated these fees? What, what kind of revenue are we talking about?
I can't tell you, Mayor, off the top of my head. I do know we included revenue for these, but I honestly don't remember what that dollar amount was in this year's budget.
I would, I would be curious to know, you know, what, what were, what would be lifted if we waived all those fees.
Can we table this until we're getting more information?
Here's, here's the only concern I have about it, because I think there's some good points, and Jack's not here tonight, and he's the one that really generated the numbers and really kind of looked around at what other cities were charging and whatnot, is my concern would be, it's a zoning ordinance, and as the mayor knows, as you guys know, we have to take that public notice through P&amp;Z, then take it through the board. There is an ordinance that's on for tonight. I would ask you guys consider approval so we can, oh, it's not on for tonight?
No.
I'll take that back then. Because I was going to say, I would, I, I would have hoped, and we can, we'll put it on for next meeting for consideration anyway, because the way it was publicly advertised was so that we could get an instant savings done, so there would be instant savings that would be in place on this. You know what I'm saying? Because we'll have to take it back through P&amp;Z if you guys consider no fees, but at least if we pass the ordinance, then we can come back and look at the, the no fees, but we would at least have the savings in effect if that made sense, and I apologize, I thought it was on.
Well, I'd like to, if, if we can, why don't we just table this? We can get some more information. Mrs. Thorne, can you get some information?
Sir?
Talk to Jack. Is he okay with that?
Everybody? Alderman Cornell? Give us, give us a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman, our motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow to table the, the amendment to Section 405.400 fees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carried five to zero to table. I got item 10C, Warren County Emergency Service Workshop. Anybody want to comment on that?
There is a meeting scheduled, I guess, is it, it's tomorrow at 7:00 PM for the Warren County Emergency Services Board. They're hosting a workshop to discuss the mules entry, and I think everybody got an invite, if I'm not mistaken. If you could let me know if you're going or not, I'd appreciate it.
I cannot make it.
I can't make it.
I told you, I can't let you.
Right. Oh, Jim.
I, I could go, but I don't inconvenience you.
Yeah. I'll get from the recorder.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to that.
Do you need to reserve a spot?
Alderman Dryer, Alderman Cornell, and me.
Did you reserve a spot?
Did I? Yes, I told somebody at a meeting last week. I told, I told them it was going.
Jim, do you need to reserve your spot?
Do I need you to? Yeah. Yeah.
Is that all, Melody?
That's it.
Okay. We're moving on to item 11. Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance Officer.
My first items for you this evening under operational updates are just informational items for you. I'm pleased to say that Jim Daly and Jack Hamp have both received certification in stormwater. They both went to a class and passed the test, and so we now have two certified stormwater inspectors to help us here in the city, so congrats to both of them. Also, to let you know that we received, the mayor received a call and actually asked me to follow up from the Coca-Cola Company. Their proposal is to provide to the city some high-density plastic drums, between 30 and 55 gallons. They said that since we've had the mandatory water conservation in place, they've had a lot of calls. These drums are used to catch rainwater and use it for watering purposes for lawns and such. They're willing to donate those to the city if we're interested. They want to make them available to the public, however, they don't have the ability to be able to be the distributor. Obviously, they have security out at their operation. They don't really have a way to connect with the public and get those delivered. So, her suggestion was that they'd be willing to donate those to the city. We could pick those up in groups of whatever they have. She said sometimes they have 30, sometimes they have five. It's just their product comes in these drums. They wash them out. They are such that a spigot can be put onto them fairly easily, so I told her that I would bring that to the board, and unless you have some objection, I think that we can work out some details to where we could store them and how people would reach out in order to be able to obtain those, but I think it's very positive, especially in the situation we're in right now with water issues, so.
This will be for next year's crop, right?
Well, I actually think that they have some on hand right now, so assuming we would get some rain, you might actually be able to utilize it to water something.
We got to wait the barrel down for a while.
Yeah, that's true.
Can I ask you a question, and tell me if this is appropriate or not? Going back to what we discussed earlier, since we're talking about the water, if it's okay to bring this up right now with the, with the situation we're doing with the well, when we're finished with that, we let the public know where we stand as far as what they can do with the water? As far as whether we go back to voluntary or, it'll be a while before we can figure that out?
Well, I think Guy is planning on addressing that if he has a report, so if it's okay, I'd like to defer
Thank you.
to him at that point. But unless you have some opposition, I'd like for us to take Coca-Cola up on their offer and make those available to the public.
I think if you have PR, I think for the city and...
Put my name on one of them?
Yeah, I'm saying my wife probably wants a couple of them too, so.
Sounds good.
We'll start a list. That's really all that I have for you as far as updates.
Operational updates?
Yes, sir.
How about quarterly allocations of capital expenditure?
I believe you had in your packet the proposed capital expenditure allocation. The process that we go through is, once the board has approved the capital budget, then Gabrielle distributes that to the department heads, and they take a look at all of the approved items within their departments, and look at it from the perspective of sometimes, and I know that's true this year, there are certain things that need to be purchased, pieces of equipment, to take care of certain projects. For example, I know that in Guy's department, he had a new paver roller on there. So, his choice was, since we've done our paving projects for the summer and the next paving projects will be in the spring, he put that in the middle of the year so that it would be bought and in place for the next paving projects. We attempt to make the allocations of funds so that everything is not, everybody wants everything in July, but we obviously don't have all the funds in July to be able to do that, so they put a lot of time into looking at what projects are appropriate for what time of the year. Many projects, like some of the paving projects that are on for contractors to do the work, we actually have to get bid specs together and have those bid out, so it would be impossible to get those, both the specs put together, the bidding process, and then have those done before it's too late to do. So, you'll notice those contracted paving projects are in the spring. There's really not a lot of magic to this, other than trying to fit things into the slots where the, hopefully, the actual work can actually happen, and if they're affected by the season of the year as well, so. This is our best effort, and always things get moved around. Some project will be put on hold because something isn't right for it to happen at that time, so. But this is our best effort at, at least, planning for the upcoming year's capital projects. One of the projects that we're trying to, and Guy will address that later on tonight, is the sidewalk project over on Pinky. We'd like to get that done as quickly as possible, obviously, because of the walking schoolchildren. I'm not sure we'll get it done before school starts, but we'd like to get it done as quickly as we can after that, so. Things like that, we really try to take into consideration in the planning of the capital projects.
Any action required on this?
Unless there's questions. It's really informational.
Information.
Unless there's something that you have a question on or something that you feel like needs to be changed.
Questions for Terry?
Mine is on the Pinky Street sidewalks that we can discuss during the period. Guys?
And then my next item is just a discussion, really, to put it out there for the public as much as anything, in regard to the municipal pool being closed. There've been a lot of questions about what kind of refund there will be on seasonal passes. We do not have information put together on that yet, because obviously, we need to know how long the pool's going to be closed before we can really put numbers together that make any sense. We've looked at both the pool parties and have attempted to get those rescheduled, and for those people that could not reschedule, we have a lot of refunds that are in process for those. The same is true of lessons that were already scheduled that couldn't be moved around. We've processed refunds for those as well, so. The only remaining piece is really, what are we going to do with the, the season passes that are out there? And my hope would be that we're going to get our well problems solved and hopefully get the pool reopened, and so next meeting, we can have some proposals, some different options for you to look at to determine how you want to handle that.
This, this Thursday will be exactly two weeks since we imposed the water conservation, so that's my goal.
I think that's a great goal.
I'm going to put Guy on the spot there. Is that a fair goal?
Just thank you.
Is that all, Terry?
That's all. Thank you.
I'm, I'm ready on item 12 for Chief of Police Greg. Howdy, show.
Good evening, Mayor and Ward.
Good evening.
The first thing I have this evening is the monthly report from June. I'm happy to say that the ride-along program is starting to pick up a little bit. We actually had five participants last month. I think Mr. Dickey was actually one of those participants, and I haven't actually had a chance to follow up with him yet, but I hope that he had a positive experience there. Good. Basically, calls are about the same as they were last year this time. One thing that I did want to commend Sergeant Ellard's crew with is the night of Catch the Glow into the next morning, Sunday morning. There was a rash of 30-some-odd vandalisms between the north part of the city and out into the county. His crew came in on Sunday morning and discovered them and went around and got all the reports, and then did all the follow-ups to find the bad guys and got everybody tied down and subsequently charged, so.
Was this during Catch the Glow?
It was, it was after.
Catching afterward.
Yeah, it was in the wee hours of the morning.
Just random vandalism?
Just, yeah, really kind of random. Went and bought some paint and had a good time. Marked stuff up. A lot of stuff.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Anyway, any questions about the energy reports?
I, yes. Is it possible, Chief, to, much like your ordinance violation sheets, to give me a printout of, or give us, provide a printout of the, a spreadsheet sorting the 20, 2500, 2607 calls, basically sort them by type?
Yeah. We, actually, that used to be part of this, but it was rather wieldy, so we cut that down.
Alderman, Alderman Clark requested that he delete that from the packet.
Oh, I like to be informed, so I would, I would at least appreciate, and I guess it won't be an issue here if we go paperless in the, in the future. Hopefully, that won't be an issue.
Okay. We'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Moving on to my next item. At the last meeting, we talked about the police presence and whatnot at Catch the Glow and how sharp everybody looked, and it occurred to me that that doesn't happen by accident. It, it comes with a great deal of planning on the front end to basically put on a good show by the police department. So, I just wanted to share with you all, just in a few minutes tonight, sort of the process that we go through when we do have an event to plan for. You know, usually that starts off with education. We became, we become aware of a situation or an event coming up, and we start putting our heads together. We contact the local organizers. We check websites if applicable, make contact with the law enforcement, intelligence community if applicable, and usually talk to the city attorney. Now, most recently, and I'm going to use this as a case study, we have an event that became, that we became aware of at the fairgrounds, which was scheduled for August the 3rd and 4th, the weekend of CMO bike rally. And I actually, just going through this, did not become aware of that until less than a week ago. It was actually a week ago tomorrow. I became aware of it. Alderman Cornell brought it to my attention, and that kicked off a series of, of events that I'm going to, as I said, I'm going to kind of use that as a case study here, but as I said, we were made aware of that on July 12th. We instantly made contact with the Warren County Fair Board to see what they were expecting, and they were expecting a nice, reasonable crowd to show up. We took a look at the website for the CMO folks and found some disturbing things there. Particularly, some of their past events, their rallies from the past, which depicted some questionable things that they did. There were some fairly graphic photographs on the site depicting some of the things that they did. There was also an article from a biker magazine which described one of their past events as well. events as well. All pretty disturbing, things that I didn't think personally belonged in Warren County, but that was the fair board's decision. We reached out to the law enforcement, intelligence community statewide, particularly with regard to motorcycle gangs or motorcycle clubs, and they told us that this event would probably rally three to four thousand bikers to the city of Warren. They also told us that what we should expect is that the participants would be wearing colors representing motorcycle groups who are commonly involved in illegal activity. We then reached out to the city attorney, and he took a look at the websites and all the other things that we've taken a look at and determined that apparently there was going to be a non-conforming use involved and did not subscribe to the P and Z. So, in the meantime, the event got canceled. Fair Board pulled back on that, and it's been canceled. So, moving on to number two, we brainstorm. In this situation, since it was canceled, it would be normal for us just to throw our hands up and give up. However, our feeling as part of our brainstorming is that they're probably going to show up anyway, so we're probably going to have an influx of bikers into the city in two weeks that we're going to need law enforcement to deal with. So our brainstorming basically, we identified potential problems, identified manpower and resources, and we took a, a close look at the possible outside assistance that we might need. The problems that we identified were traffic problems, probably the least of the problem, large groups in bars and crowded hotels, all of which fueled by, at the very minimum, probably alcohol. So the incoming problems that come with that. Manpower, as I said, we got together and really rocked our heads together, and we'll probably be mobilizing better than half of our department that weekend during peak hours, just to make sure that we're prepared properly. Other resources that we looked at, trying to locate some additional tasers from outside of the city, and we actually went ahead and ordered additional taser cartridges, anticipating those kinds of problems. I'm planning a meeting with the local law enforcement departments within the counties to make sure that they're properly prepared and aware of what's going on, and also going to be reaching out to ten or eleven other neighboring agencies to see what kind of manpower they can send us in case of a massive emergency. So again, that was part of the, the brainstorming process, and then that moves us towards the development of the plan. Usually, what we do is we hand all that information to a sergeant or the lieutenant, and they develop a written plan to address all of the issues that we talked about above. The draft of the plan is reviewed by the peers, his peers, and then ultimately by me. Typically, that is a back and forth of four or five times, just to get it right. Just as an example, the Catch the Glow plan was actually three pages long, so we get pretty in-depth, and we make sure that we cover as many bases as we can ahead of time. Then, the execution of the plan. Manpower and resources brought together for roll call just prior to the event. Copies of the plan are distributed to each officer so they can review it. That plan then is also reviewed with the officers at the roll call to make sure everybody's on the same page as we get deployed. And then there's always an after-action review. We have the commander of the event sit down and sort of review the things that went well, the things that didn't go well, so that in future events, we can do a better job. So, just a little bit of an overview. I didn't take too long, did I? But wanted you all to know what kind of goes into the planning process. Questions?
I would like to speak briefly on that. It was about this time last Tuesday night that I first became aware of this. And you're talking about a guy who wasn't very computer literate or have any interest a couple of years ago, but I was made aware of this event on, through a question on Facebook. A couple of phone calls by the next day and a couple of phone calls to some undercover agents that are versed in the CMO Bike Rally, and it was clear that this was a yearly, this was going to be the thirty-first, I believe, annual CMO Bike Rally, and they said that it is absolutely an outlaw motorcycle gang. And their fear was that it's also going to collect, it's being held this year during the travel week to Sturgis, that was going to collect travelers off of Sturgis, and it was advertised nationwide in, in biker magazines. So I've, I've had several people since then comment that we didn't need that in Warren. And I've had a couple that have contacted me and thought that it was fine, and I've tried to express to them that I am certainly not the morality police. If people want to enjoy themselves in different ways, just because it's not my type of activity doesn't mean that it's necessarily wrong. I would only say that it didn't seem to me that it was appropriate for an area in the middle of a residential setting and didn't necessarily meet up with the standards of the, of the residents of city of Warren. So that same undercover officer couldn't believe that in a matter of three days it had been canceled. And I also had contact with one of the members of the fair board, who I believe they, they honestly were just unaware. I don't, I don't think they were trying to slip, slip this one past us. When I called him, he said it's a bunch of guys that enjoy Harley-Davidsons, and they want to come here and camp. So I'm glad that they decided to cancel that event, and they will have to fight another day. So, thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Well, naturally, I had some phone calls. My neighborhood and some throughout the city. They were highly concerned about the situation, and they were glad to hear that it got canceled.
Chief, I, I got one issue for you. Have you got any phone calls about the walk bridge over the railroad tracks? Kids playing on top of that?
We have not. However, we've increased patrols there to deal with that situation, so that should be dealt with.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You bet.
Item thirteen is Public Works Director Guy Givers.
Hey, Mayor and Board. First thing I have is the monthly report. And we had five, for the month of June, we had five water main breaks. We flushed eleven thousand one hundred and five feet a month of sewer flushing. And we replaced a hundred and sixty feet of sidewalk off of Forty-Seven and the Baptist Church. We're continuing with that. And we did quite a bit of asphalt work during that month. Next item, you ready?
Okay, here we go.
Right, right off the bat, we made contact with Flynn, and he was, he assured us that if we had problems with, he had problems with parts, that he would contact us and let us know. His issue was the cord, the electrical cord for the motor, that that has to be made for the length. Called him, that was not an issue. It was all good to go. The problem we ran into today was all the piping that isn't on hand. He's got three sticks of piping that he can start putting in tomorrow, and this evening I talked to, to Mr. Flynn, and he said that the pipes on the truck, delivering to the shop, and it'll be delivered here tomorrow morning. So they'll start setting the piping tomorrow, prior if the truck doesn't overturn or break down.
Take those negative thoughts out of your head.
Yeah, well, the way it's, yeah.
Stay positive.
So they pulled all the casing out, and they camered the line. They camered it at eleven thousand feet. The data shows from prior history that the well is twelve hundred feet deep. Well, when you pull the casing out, it takes time for the settlements to go down and settle down in the bottom of the well so you can see with the camera. Well, they finished pulling the casing out today. What they were hoping to do is pull the casing out yesterday, finish up, and then let it settle out overnight. So they got down to a thousand feet, and everything that they seen looked good. They're going to take that video, take it back to their office, and confirm what the supervisor said, which we sat there and watched and camered. The, had an issue with, we needed a permit with DNR, so we got an emergency permit through DNR that required us to have an engineer go over what's going through on the well. We have an engineer on hand for the city. That's Gonzalo's company, and he came out today, viewed the video, and he's doing all the paperwork for DNR that we need. And I have a list of information that we need there. We also need to do a test at the end when the well's completed and send that to Union, Missouri, and then we'll have to wait for results back from that. That all depends on what time they get the piping in the ground, pump hooked up, and they start pumping water versus how long it takes to get to Union. If they get the pipe in tomorrow and we're pumping, then we'll send that testing right away, and it's usually a, a day, twenty-four hours, usually. Any questions?
I, I noticed your, your water usage. And it looks to me like for the month of June, we had all-time peak in amount of water we pumped. I mean, I'm sure it's due to the drought and the dry weather.
Irrigation pushes a lot of water.
Is that what's using a lot of most of it?
Once, once the work is done on the well, what can we as a board and the citizens expect for, for volume and, and what's ahead of us?
Well, we're still in the drought, so that didn't fix anything there. Our goal is turn the pump on, monitor what water we're using, and then whatever the board decides on how we want to go back, get the city pool opened up, car washes. But the first goal would be to fire the pumps up, get them running, and then see where we're at there. We can't really make a decision on where we're at till we get everything in.
Well, what's the, what's the anticipated? What is Flynn telling us this is going to do for our water production?
Well, it's going to, the issue was that the pump, we didn't have no cushion, and that caused the other wells to run harder because we didn't want that pump to cavitate or run out of water. So it should put us back in a regular cycle of normal operations, is what we're hoping.
Is that what Flynn anticipates?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that was, that was the goal, to get it down so we can run that pump, and the pump's going to be more efficient, too, from what we had. The pump that we pulled out, it was, it was worn out.
Hey, guys, so the public understands what we're doing. What we're doing essentially is lowering the pump another hundred and forty-something feet, correct? So that there's more water to pump.
That's correct.
That's where we're at. So I don't think, so they know that we're not actually re-drilling anything.
No, we're not re-drilling nothing.
Going with a submersible pump.
And it, and the submersible pump is going to be, the water table's going to be higher above the pump.
Right.
Than what it was, at one point, we're at like fifteen feet when the pump was running, and that's monitored every day, and we were monitoring it at night, whenever somebody got up, make sure, shut the well off, we'll run it. And then, then it has a recovery time, too. It takes longer to recover when you shut the well off for it to build back up over the pump.
I just want them to be aware of what we're doing and why we're going to be able to possibly open up the pool again.
We're just lowering the pump down in the water table lower.
Thank you.
If, if this does do what Flynn is anticipating, is it your belief that we'll be able to open up the car washes and the pools and, and get back to normal, or are we still going to be on, need to be on some kind of restrictive use? Best case scenario.
My goal is to get the car washes and the pool open. I mean, I think we need, we're still going to look at maybe voluntary consumption.
I think so, absolutely.
Because I don't think that's just, that they, I mean, Missouri rivers are dry, so I don't think we're just going to say we're going to flip the switch and everything's great and...
Turn on the irrigation.
Right, turn on the irrigation and, you know, that, that would be something that we would have to work out when the well gets running and see where we're at, to see what kind of effect if we open the car wash and the pool up and see what that's going to affect on the wells at that time.
I think even if we open the pool, we probably won't open the water slides, which is our biggest waste of water on the pool.
And, and that's what I think that, and I understand that a lot of this, we're not going to know until we're actually up and firing up the pump, but I think that's also going to weigh into, in my opinion, weigh into what we do with pool passes and stuff like that, is how, how much of the system we open up and so.
And there's certain times, too, that the water consumption's down, that maybe we can work with the pool company to adjust that, maybe to do their cleaning.
Any other questions for Guy?
Mayor, there's something I'd just like to add.
Sure.
During this process, I've learned more about water than I ever thought I wanted to know, but it really became apparent to me that we owe a great deal of thanks to Rusty Long, because had he not been as dedicated to making this work as he is, I don't think we would be in as good a shape as we are now. He really has minute by minute adjusted what had to happen with those wells in order to continue to provide the water that we have. So I really want to recognize him for the efforts that he's, he's put to get us through this crisis.
Absolutely.
And continues to put to get us through this crisis.
Absolutely.
So I think it's important that we recognize that for Rusty.
He's a guy up at five in the morning and...
Yep, a lot of hours.
A lot of hours, and maybe even, I don't know how late at night he checks in, but he's dedicated a lot of time.
And he worries about it.
Yes, he does. Okay. Well, pass a thanks along to him. You said you was going to buy him a pizza.
I am, when this is over, I promise you a pizza.
Pizza. Good.
Just a pizza?
You ought to buy him a water.
A lot of water. Okay. Okay, Guy, what about this request for approval obtaining engineering for Pinkney Street?
The sidewalk, we budgeted that for a contractor, and I'd like to have an engineer look at it so we can put it out for bid.
For bids. Okay. Anyone have any issues with that?
I told you.
No, that's fine.
Do we need a, a motion on that?
I, can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
You ask questions.
This is your last one.
Well, sorry, can't, can't promise that. If nobody, if everything else seems clear, then I'll... Is there any way that that, number one, can be done by our crew as opposed to a contracted crew? And number two, have, I know it was discussed a cost share on the Forty-Seven, in the future of sidewalk with the school on Forty-Seven. Is the school on board, I know that they've already done their budget, with an understanding that possibly we're going to ask them for a cost share on this also?
I don't believe so, not that I'm aware, not already clear on that.
We've not had any discussions that I'm aware of on either one of those with the school.
I didn't think I imagined the, the conversation of a cost share. Maybe that...
We did have a conversation among the board at the budget work session, but as far as I'm aware, no one from the city has approached the school on that topic that I'm aware of.
I think before we start... On the Forty-Seven or the Pinkney Street?
Either one.
Okay. I, I, I did have a conversation with the superintendent, and he asked whether we would consider a cost sharing with the school on Forty-Seven whenever, whenever they change their school system and designs around for kids having to walk down Forty-Seven and across and so forth. And, and I, my comment was that certainly something we would be interested in talking to them about, so that's as far as that went.
And when is, when is a thought process, when that can be a, a target with schools starting in the first week of August? That, that area absolutely terrifies me to think of kids walking from Warren Ridge down Pinkney Street.
Well, we'd have to put it in the paper. Engineer would have to look at it, and would have to put it in the paper and go up for bid, so I'm sure that's going to take quite a, you know...
I noticed it's not in... That's what, I noticed it's not in until the second quarter. And I guess my question is, is there a way to speed that up, or has the school been notified that that isn't going to be a reality at the start of the year? And a lot of this, I believe, is the school's own doing. I'm concerned not even, not only with the sidewalk, then you've got the children crossing at the entrance to the high school there. It's going to be a horribly dangerous situation that we can make a little bit better with the sidewalk. But I at least think that now is the time before we start putting concrete on the ground and maybe start talking to them about a cost share and what our expectations in the future for that cost share will be, so.
We can certainly do that. If you'd like us to start those conversations, we can do that. I think the first step, whether it would be made, a decision that our staff is going to do it, or it's going to be bid out in contract that is budgeted, the first step is we have to have the engineering plans because we really can't, we don't even know what the cost is estimated to be.
Absolutely.
Until we do that. So, a lot of it will be at the mercy of an engineer. And typically, what happens with a project of this size, we will get RFQs from engineers, which also is part of that process. So, it's a fairly lengthy process. Anytime that you've got engineers involved, to first get the engineer selected and then go out for bid because they'll write the specifications for the bidding process, so.
Need a motion.
I would make a motion to request or to approve obtaining engineering for the Pinkney Street sidewalk project.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to request approval for obtaining engineering for Pinkney Street sidewalk project. Roll call vote on that.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero with one eps. Jim Daly, is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim Daly.
Good evening. I have your permits issued for the month of June. I notice there's quite a few pools on there. Seems to be the highlight.
Yeah. They may not have water on them, but...
Well, most of them, a lot of them are old pools that were in existence, and we made them get the permits because they put them up without the permits already. So, there's a lot of those. And then I also have your property maintenance record. It's already on there, it's been dissolved. And that's all I have for you.
You said they're all resolved, even the one that's shown here in progress?
Well, the interruption, I'm going to have to check on that one. And the other one, that's there from 702, that one's been taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Your reason. Congratulations on your certification.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
That old dog new trick thing, that's not true, is it?
No.
Michelle Smither, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First thing I have for you tonight is my economic development update. In there, you'll see, we did not have a meeting last month with Greater Warrenton County Economic Development Council as a council. They had a work session with the school board similar to what we had here. And I do not believe at this time that they've actually heard back from the school board as to whether they are going to make a commitment. So, they are, we did have a meeting this month, and you'll have an update on that. But at this time, that was what we did for our meeting in June, so. And there's no questions on that. My next item is, just to inform you all, you should have received a little invitation. Criter Health is having a ribbon cutting, grand opening ceremony on Tuesday, July 24th at 5:00 p.m. And if you are able to attend, if you'll just let me know either way, and I will make sure that we have a list of who's going to attend for that.
I could walk to there, but that's my neighbor, so not a problem.
The last thing I have for you this evening is to inform you that MoDOT is having a blue-ribbon citizens committee meeting, and it's going to be in reference to different transportation needs that we have in our community. And part of that, I'm sure, will be the I-70 toll roads. I have been asked to attend that meeting and to speak as a stakeholder for our community, so I will be attending and giving, I have five minutes allocated to me to talk and let them know of our issues and concerns that we have in our community. So, we make sure that they understand that toll roads on I-70 at the locations they have will be very detrimental to our community, businesses, and residents. With that, I'm sorry?
You know, originally, we were told that that was a dead issue, that they had taken that off the table and not to worry about it, and now it's back.
Yes.
What happened there?
They have not said. I'm not quite sure. Just received this in the mail with no in-depth as to what's going on with it. But I don't think it's really going to be a dead issue till they get resolution on funding issues.
Okay.
And with that, was wondering, I will be attending, but I didn't know if any of the board would be attending as well.
That's the 23rd of July.
Mm-hmm, at 10:00 a.m. in Handel.
Next Monday.
Next, this coming month.
I cannot.
Time to do this?
I don't know, I'll have to look.
Well, if someone can't attend, they need to let you know.
Please. We can actually meet here and write together. I have the city being reserved. If they would like to do that, we could do that.
Very good. Any other questions for Michelle?
On the Highway Party 7 street lighting, Michelle, are we moving along on that? Where are we at with that?
We are. We have received our bids on it, and I'm getting together the packet of information. MoDOT has changed things that they want back. So, we've got our bids in, we have our low bidder, and I have the packet of information together. Send it to Terry for her review because there's actually, it's a pretty good packet of information that they want now. And so, once I get that back, I'm sure I'll receive that soon. I can forward that on to MoDOT for their approval of our low bidder, and then I will bring that to the board. But instead of bringing it to you and then going to MoDOT, send it to them first because they have to approve it regardless. And we have to go with the low bidder as long as they can approve that they are on MoDOT's list and that they are competent and there's certain qualifications. So, unfortunately, unlike when we go out to bid for something and we're on, due to this being federal funding, we have to follow their guidelines. So, we would have to go with the low bidder as long as they met the qualifications.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we should have something in the next few weeks for you guys on that to approve, and we could get going on that.
Well, that's good news, because it's been a long time coming.
Any other questions for Michelle? Is that all you have, Michelle?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Item sixteen, Brad Boosick, Maintenance and Grounds Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. You have the June 15th to July 17th Maintenance Report for the Grounds and Maintenance Department. Mowing has slowed down. Some of the maintenance and stuff, we're getting caught up on some of that. And everything is just kind of slowing down, which is kind of a good thing in our department, so as far as the grass cutting and what have you. No questions on that. Move on to the update on Concerts in the Park. The last Thursday, three-point hit played, and that was Mike Shell Harvey, Steve Hood, and Bruce Kestner were the ones that played for that. Had a total of, I think, I counted around one time, about 75. There is probably one of the largest ones that we've had. The next one is August the 9th, and I'm not sure who that one was. I kind of have a hard time getting the list from them of who's playing. Also, there's one recommendation I want to make to the park board is next year, if they decide to do this, to require them to have signage out when they have them. There's been no signage at any of the ones, previous ones, and I think that's really hurting our attendance, right city. Everybody else puts, they have signs for them. So, I don't know if it's just they can't afford them, or if that's something the park board maybe wants to do, put some permanents or some signs out that we can put out the week before the concert, let the community know. Because there are a lot of them in the community that didn't even know about it and would have liked to have heard them, but just didn't, you know, didn't see it out on the signs and stuff, so.
They put signs out in the past.
Yes, they have. This, last two years, there've been no signage, which I think really hurts it. And I think a lot of, like I say, a lot of the people in the community. Thursday night was beautiful. I mean, really nice night, cooled off. It was really nice. But that's something I will be bringing back to the park board, you know, have them, a couple of the park board members were there, and we kind of talked about it and said the same thing, that something needs to be brought up. So, that's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Brad? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
On item seventeen, Bills to Ordinances. If there's any questions or concerns, I'll call for a motion for the first reading of Bill 33-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 33-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo for first reading of Bill 33-12.
In ordinance amending section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrenton.
Call for second final reading and passage to Bill number 33-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading of Bill number 33-12.
In ordinance amending section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrenton.
Need a vote, let me individually. Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero with one eps.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 34-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall for first reading of Bill 34-12.
In ordinance amending section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrenton.
Call for second final reading and passage to Bill number 34-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading of Bill number 34-12.
In ordinance amending section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrenton.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero, one eps.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 35-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of Bill number 35-12.
In ordinance of the City of Warrenton, Missouri approving a 24-hour moratorium on the enforcement of sign regulations under section 425.0901 of the City's Municipal Code.
Call for second final reading and passage to Bill number 35-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading of Bill number 35-12.
In ordinance of the City of Warrenton, Missouri approving a 24-hour moratorium on the enforcement of sign regulations under section 425.0901 of the City's Municipal Code.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Motion carried, five, zero, one eps.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 36-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall for first reading of Bill number 36-12.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the program income reuse plan for the neighborhood stabilization program.
Call for second final reading and passage to Bill number 36-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 36-12.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the program income reuse plan for the neighborhood stabilization program.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero with one eps. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman, or motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo to adjourn. All